All right. Hearing, hearing. The County Commission Committee is now in session by Honorable Howard Chipley Presiding. Please remain standing.
This time we'll call the June 24, 2021, meeting of the Hamlin County Legislative Body to order. Let us pray. Our Father, we give you thanks this afternoon that we can gather here to consider the business that is on our agenda. And as we do so, Father, we pray that you would give us the wisdom and guidance that we need. We pray that those decisions that we make will be for the best interest of the citizens of this county. And then also, Father, we ask that that which we do would bring honor and glory to your name. We pause at this time, Father, to remember all of those who are involved in the search for the young girl that is missing in Hawkins County. Father, we pray that you would lead, guide, and direct that they might be able to come to a very successful conclusion. And we ask, Father, that you would give encouragement and strength to the family and to all those who are involved in this effort. We will give you the honor, the praise, and the glory, for us in Christ's name we pray. Amen. Commissioner, go on. Would you lead us in our pledge, please?
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Before we do our roll call this evening, our county court clerk, Penny Petty, is going to give us some instructions on some changes in our voting system.
Did know he was going to get me to last time and get around to everybody at one time. If you noticed, your pads now, instead of being upright, they'll be turned sideways. You have to keep your screen that way. And the only other thing is, it'll guide you, just like the other one did. But we just didn't want you all seeing that it was different and thinking that you had to do much different. But it'll guide you on the yes, no, just like the other one did.
Okay. Let's discuss the voting, actually, the voting where...
The tally and the vote.
The tallying of the vote.
The tallying of the vote now. There's a change on that. It used to automatically have a tally after everybody had finished voting, the last voter would tally. Well, we had some people that wanted to change their votes, which you are allowed to change your vote before he calls for the tally. Once he calls for the tally, though, you're not supposed to be able to change your vote. So we changed it on this new system in that he will call for the vote, and then he will also call for the tally. But he will give you time there to change your mind. If you want to change from yes to no, you'll have a little bit of time there before he calls for the tally, and then we'll tally the vote.
Okay. Thank you, Penny. We appreciate that very much. So at this time, let's do the roll call, please. All right. We do have a quorum present. Again, before we start our business this evening, I want to recognize David Byrd, who is representing our county attorney, Chris Capps, at this meeting. Chris is out of town, and David is one of his colleagues, and we welcome you to our meeting, David. At this time, I will recognize Mayor Britton, who has a proclamation to make.
Sarah Turney. Your junior is Dairy Month, and one of the largest industries in the state of Tennessee is the agriculture industry. So we want to just take the time and recognize the role that dairy farmers and the dairy industry plays in the economy and the well-being of Hamlin County. In this proclamation from the county mayor's office, says, whereas dairy farmers and the dairy industry have contributed to the development and well-being of the citizens of Hamlin County since its earliest formation, and whereas the dairy industry is a major industry in Tennessee and makes a significant contribution to the economy of our city, and whereas milk and dairy foods provide health benefits and valuable nutrients, and whereas real milk and dairy foods are superior to their imitations in quality, value, and taste, and whereas the 84th celebration of June Dairy Month, promoting the dairy industry will occur during June 2021. Now therefore, we proclaim that the Hamlin County Legislative Body and the Hamlin County Mayor, Bill Britton, can hereby proclaim the month of June to be designated to celebrate June Dairy Month. And Hamlin County encourage all citizens to join the campaign and to observe the month with appropriate programs.
Thank you, Mayor Britton. Appreciate that very much. This time, the chair will recognize Chairman Jim Step of the Calendar and Rules Committee.
Thank you, Chairman. Item 2A, approval of consent calendar items. I put it in form of a motion.
We have a motion. All right. Do we have a second? We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, then, let's vote the motion.
Item 2A, thirteen yays, zero nays.
Does anybody want to change their vote?
Count it.
Okay. Thank you.
Item 2B, approval of a regular calendar items. I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please. Does anybody want to change their motion? Tally the vote, please.
Item 2B, thirteen yays, zero nays.
All right. The motion is approved.
That's all I have, Chairman.
Thank you very much. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Would you push the button there? Thomas Dooty?
Not yet.
All right. We have a motion. We need a second. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please. Does anybody want to change their vote? Tally the vote, please.
Item 3A, thirteen yays, zero nays.
Okay. The motion is approved. We have no nominations. At this time, we will entertain public comments on agenda items only. If you would like to address this commission regarding any agenda item, you can come to the podium at this time, state your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes for your comments.
My name is Lyndon Oi, 2343 Joe Stevens Road. I'd like to address item 12, the Hale House renovations. You're putting that out to bid for the third time. There's a problem when that happens. There's a problem when it happens twice. There's a big problem when it happens three times. You need to ask questions, and you need to find out what is going on, that we have this repeated bidding or even RFQs. You've had it on multiple items to do with this jail. You're getting ready, presumably, to bid the jail for a second time. You had trouble with the commissioning services contract. You had trouble with the project manager's contract, and you had to do that multiple times. You've still got the situation with the inspections and materials testing. There is a serious problem when you have that many situations where you can't get it right. And I notice on the jail, I don't see... Mosley here, looks like they're... unless they've come in. Looks like they're still missing in action. And they are a big source of our problems.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
Windle and Holden, 8150 West Point Drive. I want to talk about the stormwater. We have a lot of stormwater on May Collins Road, where I used to live. It floods out my property all the time. We also have stormwater problems at the Brady Drive. It floods them out also. So some of that federal money, I think, should be... go toward stormwater improvements in some of these communities. So think about that, because they really need to be fixed. And if they're not fixed, you may have problems.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else who wishes to address items on the agenda?
Nigel Reed, Houston Street, I mean Oakwood Circle. The jail is a death trap, period. The Hamlin County Sheriff's deputies are breathing in black mold. Do any of you people know that there's black mold in that facility and how dangerous it is? Any of you? I guess not. Who cares, do you? The nurses breathing in black mold, the jailers are breathing in black mold, all of them, from the captain down to the sergeants, breathing in black mold, the attorneys, not just the inmates. I mean, see, that's where you people get lost. And I said the city, too. Now, this, I guess, is up to $100 million. I looked at the back of her t-shirt. That's crazy. We're going to lower that down to $34 million, like Brotherhood wanted. I said my daddy, King Arthur Clarence Reed, died as a 33rd level Grand Master Shriner. Mama, Queen Loretta Mae Reed Smith, was the daughter of Isis. You people are going to have to get it straight, get it done, because, see, I've already talked to my doctor and asked her to set up an appointment for me to see do I have any spots in my lungs. Do any of you have any idea what black mold does? I know she's writing down some notes. Even when you go down there and do the inspection, wow, you're breathing in black mold. Didn't know that, did you? I mean, do you people understand how dangerous black mold is? I've said that about six, seven times. It is not a joke. All this will, let's raise it from 34 million to 75 million to 100 million. I mean, come on. It's our tax dollars. These human beings, it's possibly going to start dying from your ignorance. You people are going to have to get it together. Don't drag your feet. Don't act like it's funny.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else who wishes to address the commission? Seeing none, then, we're going to recess the Hamlin County Legislative Body, have an open public hearing regarding Resolution 21-10, changing the zoning of a piece of property located on Three Springs Road, Russellville, Tennessee, from R1 to A1. Do we have anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of that change or against that change? You can come to the podium at this time. All right. Seeing no one coming to the podium, then we're going to close our public hearing and reconvene as the Hamlin County Legislative Body. Under item 7, the chair at this time would entertain a motion dealing with that Resolution 21-10 to amend the zoning of this piece of property from R1 to A1.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
All right. Chris Cutsaw has moved that we make that change. Is there a second?
A second.
There is a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, then, let's vote the motion, please. Does anyone wish to change their vote? If not, let's tally the vote, please.
Item 7A, fourteen yays, zero nays.
Okay. The motion is approved. At this time, the chair will recognize Chairman Randy DeBoer of the Budget Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 8A, Resolution 2106, making appropriations for various fund departments, institutions, offices, agency for Hamlin County, Tennessee for year beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, then, let's vote the motion, please. Does anyone wish to change their vote? Let's tally the votes, please.
Item 8A, fourteen yays, zero nays.
The motion... The resolution is approved.
Item 8B, Resolution 2107, Resolution fixing the tax levy in Hamlin County, Tennessee for fiscal year July 1 through 2021. And that is $1.76 inside city and $1.97 outside the city, and I put it in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, then, let's vote the motion, please. Does anyone wish to change their vote? If not, then, let's tally the votes, please.
Item 8B, fourteen yays, zero nays.
The resolution is approved.
Item 8C, Resolution 2108, making appropriations for nonprofit, charitable, and civic organizations of Hamlin County, Tennessee for year beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30 of 2022. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please. Does anyone wish to change their vote? If not, let's tally the vote, please.
Item 8C, fourteen yays, zero nays.
The resolution is approved.
Item 8D, Resolution 2109, joint resolution of Hamlin County, Tennessee, Hamlin County Commission, and Hamlin County Board of Education, a joint resolution to approve a nonrecurring one-time appropriation for fiscal year 2022, nonrecurring technology equipment. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please. Does anyone wish to change their vote? If not, then, let's tally the vote, please.
Item 8D, fourteen yays, zero nays.
The resolution is approved.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman DeBoer. At this time, the chair will recognize Chairman DeBoer of the Finance Committee.
Item 9A, the approval of the monthly checks, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please. Does anyone wish to change their vote? Tally the vote, please.
9A, fourteen yays, zero nays.
The motion is approved.
Item 9B, purchasing policy and procedure update for May 2021. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please. Commissioner Ward. Does anyone wish to change their vote? Tally the vote, please.
9B, fourteen yays, zero nays.
The motion is approved.
Number 9C, bid tabulation for concrete sidewalk and steps for Justice Center parking area. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please. Does anyone wish to change their vote? Tally the vote, please.
9C, fourteen yays, zero nays.
The motion is approved.
9D, Resolution 2111, Hamlin County Board of Education, federal projects cash flow. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please. Seth will vote when his machine starts working. Does anyone wish to change their vote? If not, tally the vote, please.
9D, fourteen yays, zero nays.
The motion is approved.
Number 9E, grant funds awarded to Office of Criminal Justice program for 45K on arraignment, video arraignment. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote the motion, please. Does anyone wish to change their vote? Tally the vote, please.
9E, fourteen yays, zero nays.
The motion is approved.
Number 9F, budget amendments for Hamlin County Board of Education, budget amendment number 8 for $1,306,010.54. And this does not impact the maintenance of effort, and I put it in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Chairman, hold your position, Chairman. Keep going out.
Can I see it? Just going off on you.
Yeah. It's...
Please, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, break the lab boys out.
Tally the vote, please.
9F, fourteen yays, zero nays.
The motion is approved.
9G1, Fund 101 for County Commission, $1,295 for summer intern, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please. Does anyone wish to change their vote? Tally the vote, please.
9G1, fourteen yays, zero nays.
The motion is approved.
9G2, Fund 101 Juvenile Court for $4,200. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Tally the vote, please.
9G2, thirteen yes, zero no, one abstain.
The motion is approved.
Item 9G3, Fund 101 Register of Deeds for $5,200. That is for additional postage and for the register of deeds, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please. Does anyone wish to change their vote? Tally the vote, please.
9G3, fourteen yes, zero no.
The motion is approved.
9G4, Fund 101 Other Social, Cultural, and Recreation. That's for $10,000 on the tire grant, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please. Does anybody wish to change their vote?
9G4, fourteen yays, zero nays.
The motion is approved.
9G5, Fund 101 Other Social, Cultural, and Recreation for $6,300 for literal grants, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please. Anyone wishes to change their vote? Tally the vote, please.
9G5, fourteen yays, zero nays.
The motion is approved.
9G6, Fund 101 Public Safety Projects for $215,000, and that's for the purchase of the Hyde House, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Tally the vote, please.
9G6, twelve yays, two nays.
The motion is approved.
9G7, Fund 116 Sanitation Garbage Department, $20,000. That's for disposal fees, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please. Anyone wishes to change their vote? Tally the vote, please.
9G7, fourteen yays, zero nays.
The motion is approved.
Number 9G8, Fund 131 for Highway Department, $2,000 for gasoline, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Vote the motion, then. Anyone wishes to change their vote? Tally the vote, please.
9G8, fourteen yays, zero nays.
The motion is approved.
Number 9G9, Fund 151 Debt Service for $3,600. That's for USDA Appalachia Rural Development Grant, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please. Anybody wish to change their vote? Tally the vote, please.
9G9, fourteen yays, zero nays.
The motion is approved.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman DeBoer. At this time, the chair will recognize Chairman DeBoer of the Personnel Committee.
On item 10A, Revision to Employee Handbook, Hamlin County Government Vehicle Use Policy, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please. Does anybody wish to change their vote? Tally the vote, please.
10A, fourteen yays, zero nays.
The motion is approved.
Item 10B, Revisions to Employee Handbook for Bereavement Leave, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please. Anybody wishes to change their vote? Tally the vote, then.
10B, fourteen yays, zero nays.
The motion is approved.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman DeBoer. At this time, the chair will recognize Chairman Tim Gons of the Public Service Committee.
Thank you, Chairman. Item 11A, Recommendations by Morton Hamlin GIS for Street Naming of Waterfront Terrace. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please. Does anybody wishes to change their vote? Tally the vote, please.
11A, fourteen yays, zero nays.
The motion is approved.
Item 11B, surplus items for the jail, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please. Does anybody wish to change their vote? Tally the vote, please.
11B, fourteen yays, zero nays.
The motion is approved.
11C, surplus items for the Community Service Work Program, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please. Anybody wishes to change their vote? Tally the vote, please.
11C, fourteen yays, zero nays.
The motion is approved.
Thank you, Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chairman Gons. At this time, the chair will recognize Chairman Tim Warner of the Justice Center Jail Project Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 12A is to rebid the Hale House for renovations, and I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Commissioner Neese Smith, you are recognized.
Why are we bidding this again? Because we didn't have the two bids on it this time and had one the first time.
Hoping to create some more interest in it.
Do what?
Hoping to create some more interest in the bid.
Some more bid. I know back in February, this was a critical thing, and we wanted to go ahead and vote on it before some of the commissioners come up and said that, and I was one of them, that we need... up and said that, and I was one of them, that we need to have more than one bid on a project like this. Mr. Huntsman came along with it. And then that's why we opened it back up and got the second deal now. We've got two bids. We want to try to get more people, more bidders on it. And I hope we do.
That's what you wanted.
Nothing's good with one bid or two bid on a $215,000 project. And nothing was that critical that we went ahead back in February and voted on this thing. It's not a critical issue. Still not a critical issue. We're not doing anything off the Hell House now. We don't need it. We don't have to tear that land down to pay for the jail. We not even broke ground on the jail yet. So it's not a critical thing. I think we need to, I'm glad that we're going out for more bids on it. I'll put it that way. But it wasn't a critical issue when it first came up. That's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner Gohens, you are recognized.
Chairman, I just believe if we have to send this out for bid five or six times till we get what we need to get, I think we ought to do that. Because the fact is, that's just the right thing to do for the citizens of Hamlin County.
Any more discussion? Commissioner Huntsman.
Yeah, I'm just kind of lost things. I never have seen anything that's a critical thing. Never saw this as a critical thing. I don't know where that terminology came from, that. But we want to do it right. And we want to get the best bid we can to fix it up. But it had nothing to do with being critical, I don't think.
Yeah, we brought this up in committee, that we wanted to vote on this thing at the next commission meeting. And we came through, when you come through the door, you told me that Bill had taken care of it, that the architect now wants to have more bidders on it. But we were going to vote on it that day if that hadn't happened.
Okay. Anybody else who wishes to discuss the item? If not, let's vote a motion, please. Does anybody wish to change their vote? Tally the vote, please.
12A, 12 ye, 2 no.
The motion is approved.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Horner. At this time, the Commission will entertain public comments on any item. You can come to the podium. You have three minutes. State your name and your address.
Right now, I'm appearing, as you can see, as Shabang Bang, honey. It's a character of mine, a comedy character, which a lot of people like it. When I first started this four years ago, I had at least, what, 70-something thousand views? We want to get back to this jail that Mr. Horner, that we need more bids. Mr. Gohens as well, we need more bids. I'm not going to call you county commissioners, because all you people are just joking. Joking around with all the lives down there. You act like you care, but you really don't, do you? How many times you people been down in that jail? I dare say if you been once, you might have some of that black mold in your lungs. I want to do my Shabang Bang character, but I just got to come out and just be me. Point blank, absolutely and definitely. Ever that's one of you, now, when I say look like clowns, clowns in the circus make people laugh. You making all of us laugh in this community. Now, getting back to talking about the officers, some of you in here, I know you've been down there in that jail when I was in there. Think about how much black mold you've been drinking. I mean, breathing. I know Mr. Ward's been down there a lot. I mean, you're up in age, sir. What about that black mold? Never thought about it, right? There's some people here. Mr. Shifely, have you been down there? No. You have? Think about the black mold that's in your body right now. Something to really think about, isn't it? Everybody thinks there's just male and female inmates breathing in that garbage. The city officers, the county officers, everyone of rank, investigators, bondsmen. It's extremely dangerous. It's my time almost, darling.
You've got 30 seconds.
Go. No, but I'm good. I just want to let everybody know, you know, start thinking about your fellow men, your fellow women, your fellow associates, especially if you people have officers, city and county, that's breathing in that black mold. Lawyers, bondsmen, nurses. I mean, that's sad. You people aren't going to care for human life. My son's been down there for almost three months.
Thank you, Nigel. Your time's up. Appreciate it.
Do something, or don't ruin it all again.
Does anybody else wish to address the Commission?
My name's Carl Murphy. I live at 1101 West Rose Street in City. Mr. Chairman, my talk covers Hamlin County garbage trucks and the riders only, not all America. May 26 Tribune run, quote, "One of the most dangerous jobs in American dash, a man hanging off the back of a truck," unquote. It's sad some downplay our present safety. And insinuate our workers hang off their work trucks. I question some words used concerning our hard-working employees that bust their rears to keep our streets clean. I have yet to see one worker hanging off anything, much less the back of his work truck. Why go from what works in a $320,000 budget to trucks over a half a million? Why go from a good working process to something that's still a question mark? Is it worth taking this chance, what works, to something never been fully tested and approved by our own truck employees? They tell you facts without sugarcoating it. I have three questions, sir, concerning garbage trucks. Number one is, where are the stats proving that workers from the back of garbage trucks, yes, garbage trucks, is one of the most dangerous jobs in America? Where did this info come from? Number two is, how many Hamlin County employees have been injured from hanging off the back of garbage trucks? Three is, what are the advantages mentioned of this overpriced truck? Keep, help the back truck riders, keep them in warm equipment in the winter, better rain protection and good gloves. Working all kinds of weather is not a cakewalk. I'm proud of the team working my street. I read papers telling how much money is or has been spent, for as seldom I see where something's been done to save money. And I don't mean budgets. We all know how that works. Equipment wears out from age and our use, even automotive garbage trucks, which I have, which cost twice as much. Mr. Chairman, I have a request. All commissioners connected to Public Works not be allowed to vote if these high-priced automotive trucks come to vote. I'm sure you know why and who. Thank you, sir, very much.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else who wishes to address the Commission?
There are Woodlawn Road in Moorestown. At the committee meeting, I spoke about Nancy Phillips and her remarks. Mentioned that some commissioners had actually spoke out that, no, her remarks were over the top and she should be removed. And then stated how that a lot of you were gutless and refused to take a stand. When I made those remarks, I did not mention that Mr. Home and Mr. Cuthaw did email me, spoke out against what she had done and said that that was way over the top. And I did not mention that they had done that, which left the implication that they were in favor of what she had done. And I want to correct that, that they did say that her remarks were over the top and she should be removed for it. The second thing I want to address, all of you are familiar with the Titanic, the unsinkable ship that killed 1,500 people. Mr. Gohens, over here by his command, brought up the issue of these things that are now coming to light and why wouldn't they brought up like before? Mr. Shifely, you yourself said that this is making the Commission look like a fool, not reviewing these things until now that we're already into this project. Well, if we go back to the Titanic, they hit a simple piece of ice, that 75% of it you couldn't even see. 25% of it they did see, but that ain't what sunk that ship. It was the 75% you could see. How much in here are y'all not seeing yet that's coming out on this contract that's going to sink this ship? You're getting your advice from a person who has a vested interest in it, your contractor, excuse me, your architect, Mosley. You shouldn't be getting your advice from them. You should be digging from outside sources, other sources. What do we not know yet that's going to end up biting us in the rear? Because just like that ship that they trusted in, the people who had a vested interest in it, and 1,500 people died. Are y'all going to let that happen here in the county? Are you going to trust somebody who has a vested interest in it to sell you a building that they're going to tell you the truth? Are y'all going to get in here and dig and get other opinions to save this county? Mr. Gohens spoke up. I went over after me and told him that was a breath of fresh air to hear him say that. And I hope the rest of you will follow his lead and dig and start asking some questions before we bankrupt this county. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else who wishes to address the Commission?
Bonnie Ballington, 317 Stepplefield Street, Whitesburg. I stood here at this podium at the committee meeting and asked the commissioners to think about putting it on tonight's agenda for the commissioners to vote to have Nancy Phillips removed from the Rules Committee because of her actions. I didn't see anything about it on the, um, the agenda. Not one word. That tells me where you all stand. You take sides with somebody that will badmouth us and put us down because you don't care. You want to keep us silenced. I will not be silenced. Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to address the Commission?
Linda Noe, 2343 Joe Stevens Road. Hamlin County has a jail problem. We all know that. Your solution, well, actually, it's Mayor Britton and Mosley Architect's solution, is a $100 million multi-story jail with a Taj Mahal Justice Center. $88 million to construct, $4 million already spent, $3 million for furniture, fixtures, and equipment, and at least $5 million to finish paying Mosley, Burwell, the commissioning company, and other contracts, and maybe a little bit left for a contingency. The $100 million solution started out just a couple of years ago as a $35 million solution with a jail for 550 beds. Then, as soon as Commissioner Jarvis died in 2019, Mayor Britton took over. There was no one asking questions, and it became what we have today, a 620-bed jail and a very elaborate justice center. Land was purchased, houses were demolished, and now we have a $100 million price tag for a multi-story jail that the sheriff has said is too costly, unsafe, and unstaffable. You still keep asking the wrong question. You asked Tony Pettit on the 14th, how can we cut the costs on this $100 million jail? Mosley doesn't even show up. I guess they just sit over there and take the checks. The right question is, can we solve our jail problem by building a less costly, safer, one-level jail with a single control tower in each 200 inmate pod? And the answer to that question is yes. We can solve our jail problem spending maybe 55 to 60 million, now that things have gone up, on simple one-level jail pods. If you care about the citizens and taxpayers, here's the question you should ask yourself. Should we find out and compare the cost, staffing, and safety of the $100 million jail versus a one-level jail with pods and a renovated justice center? The answer to that question is yes. Will you find out? Or is it just a matter of, we want this jail. We want to have this elaborate justice center. We want to spend $100 million. Mayor Britton has told us we can afford it. We can get money from the state. Those are the wrong questions. It's not a matter of, can you spend $100 million? Should you? Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to address the Commission? 10910, want to remind the commissioners of your announcements regarding the July committee meetings and the July commission meetings. These will be posted for the public. We've concluded our business, so we'll stand adjourned.